They can do that, according to the county, you can get like every eight years or something like that, you can get six months off with pay if you say that you're going to study remotely something agricultural.
Karen, who have we got that's not coming tonight?
Like part of their...
He's the only one? Okay.
Where do you live?
In Santa Rosa Beach.
Santa Rosa Beach.
Yes. Worked here as a licensed surveyor.
We've got a bunch of them. You're taking Scott's place, sir. Good guy.
I worked with Scott for seven years. Same company.
I would bet against that.
I liked him a lot. He was a good guy.
Yeah.
That is for sure.
I think he'd make...he talked to me about it. He actually submitted my name for consideration.
Okay.
I think he was stuck with it, had not taken the position.
Yeah, no, he was good. He...they had the county surveyor position.
I know that feeling.
That's a good job for him. I think he got to the point that he didn't like to survey much anymore. And with what he does now, he just kind of oversees it. So he'll do the actual surveying. So kind of...
I haven't heard.
Maybe.
I haven't heard a word.
Yeah. Amazing.
You gotta be like him. He was more... He was relevant on all these old...
Yeah.
Old deeds or not to be recorded at all.
You got government notes?
Yeah.
A government patent.
Yeah. Yeah, patents, yes. It's like all...
This is hell. These things came about.
Yeah, he didn't do it. Yeah, he didn't take...some of these will have like, it's subject to an easement.
This is... This is right away. Yeah, the wording, I'm dealing with what they call a public right-of-way easement, access and utility easement. Yeah. But it doesn't...I don't think the legal implications that different between the non-creature.
Yeah.
I don't.
He had some...
Don't say that to the parent. No. They wanted it to say this, they wanted it to say this.
Yeah. Yeah. According to Scott, one time, he was like, "No, no, if it said that, that's what it would be, but it says this, so this is what it is." That's what he told him.
You're not expecting to have an expert opinion?
Yeah. You can give your opinion, you can say what you want, and you can do that.
Try to leave the survey in at home.
Yeah? We see a lot of surveys.
At least you could like clarify something. Clarify stuff. Clarify somebody's stance, if the survey says something, if the survey says something.
Yeah.
The survey.
Yeah, a lot of times attorneys are...they'll fudge a little bit of what it says or what it don't say.
I'm here. We've been talking about it.
But, uh...
Yeah. Started to use the rest before the meeting.
Me? Phil can do it. He's good at it. Yeah. No, I mean like, I don't care, I'll do it if you want me to.
Charlie's gotta do it in January.
Yeah, yeah. I'll do it either way. Yeah. Nah, I'll do it if you want, either one, whichever. All right, excuse me.
I'm ready. For this hour, we would file the December 14th, 2017, Walton County's on the Board of the Justice to order.
We appreciate it if you would stand as we have an implication followed by the pleas of allegiance. Mr. Anderson, if you will, leave us some indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all you provide, we thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight as a community and as board to render some decisions. We ask that you be with us, give us wisdom and guidance. And we thank you for the opportunity to live in this great country of ours and in this county. For this, we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Blessed are we, we are used to life by the United States of America and to build a world which is standing in its own way, which is indivisible, and where it is just for our own.
Thank you to be seated. We do appreciate all the board members being here tonight. We really appreciate Karen and all the hard work that she does and for this board and for the planning department. We appreciate the planning department, their staff. Sometimes we appreciate our attorney, Mr. Dykes, sometimes we don't.
Most of the time.
Most of the time. Listen, all my noise, we appreciate you being with us. Any announcements need to be made?
Yes, sir, we have a couple of...we have one project that is not on our agenda tonight that was actually advertised by the applicant and assigned posted for this meeting tonight prior to us receiving the application. And we wanted to make sure that there wasn't anyone here tonight because we can't hear that particular project. It will be known as the Maher Varens, M-A-H-E-R. It's on North Orange Street. It will be heard on January 25th, 2018 at 6:00 PM in this location.
Now, what's the name of it?
It's the Maher Varens, M-A-H-E-R.
M-A-H-E-R, Varens.
Is that acceptable to advertise before you even fill out an application?
There's an error there.
It's very unusual.
It's not...
It was...it was an error on behalf of the applicant. They, in good faith, posted their signs and sent out the mail notices, not realizing that they actually had to file the application so we could actually advertise this meeting.
So we cannot hear the Maher's Varens. Is anyone here for that Varens? I don't think anybody's here.
We do have one other...another request to continue to January 25th, and that's item number three, the Turner Clap Varens.
On that Maher's Varens, do we need a continuance, a motion to continuance?
No, sir. I think really what that was, was a kind of a service announce, public service announcement in case anybody was here. We didn't have it on the agenda. And staff had asked if we needed to put it on the agenda. I suggested against it since it wasn't properly before the board at this point. So that was just to announce it, to let anybody know who might be here for that.
All right, go ahead, Matt.
We have a request to continue on item number three on the agenda. That's the Turner Clap Varens. That request is to continue to January 25th, 2018 at 6:00 PM in this location.
Motion to continue?
Motion.
Department?
Are folks here for that?
Are they here tonight? Are there anyone here for item number five, Turner Clap Varens?
Three. Item number three.
Number three? It's been standing...we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but we're gonna continue that to the January meeting? You want to tell why it is being continued?
I think it was out of the...
The...I can represent to the board, there was another email that followed this one, where Mr. Turner placed in an email, "Just to further clarify, we need more time to review the results, conversations we had, have had with Walton County, the surveyor, the title company, as well as legal counsel."
That's what we have, yes.
So that's the reason they asked them for a Varens or a continuation?
Yes.
Item number three will be continuing until January 25th, 2018. So if you're here for that, it will be continued. Motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We apologize that y'all was not notified. We do appreciate you coming and look forward to seeing you in January.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you, happy holidays.
We have one more request, and this is from the legal counsel for item number four, to move that to the beginning of the agenda.
Why?
We have a scheduling conflict.
Okay, before we do that, the number one, Hackett Varens, Hackett by Varens, do they agree with it? Before we do anything else, we need to take and...everyone here, everyone here that anticipates speaking before this crowd tonight, please stand, raise your right hand so you be sworn. We're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Mr. Dykes?
Yes, sir. Do y'all swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Okay, who's here for number one? Stand up. Is it okay with you that we put number four in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Who's here for number two? Is it okay for number four to go in front of you?
Short one?
We're gonna give everybody, every Varens here to...
Mr. Matthews will give it short, yes.
Everybody gets 10 minutes per Varens. We need to get out of here by seven, okay? Okay. They agree to it with the...
We'll hear number four, the Fur Varens. I think that will be presented by Dana Matthews.
Mr. Matthews?
Do you have 10 minutes? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I will make it quick. Dana Matthews, I'm here for Mark Fur. He's a property owner in Village of White Cliffs. You have the application before you, I presume, in your packages. You have a staff report. There's, as y'all know, there's seven components to a Varens request. Staff has analyzed the application, staff has recommended approval, that we meet all the terms and conditions. Real briefly, that this is a very, this is an innovatively designed subdivision. It was approved by the county in 1993, and in 19...when the covenants, conditions, and restrictions were recorded, the setbacks on all the lots, there are different types of lots, they have different setbacks for each lot, they don't conform with what the LDC requires, but from 1993 to 2015, you go to the building department, get your architectural review control, architectural review approvals from the association through their architect, you go to the building department, you get your building permit, and you construct it. That's how it's been done ever since 2015. 2015, there was a change in the decision-making process with the planning department, the then director, and now anybody that wants to do something different than the LDC required setbacks has to come for a Varens. That's happened to y'all twice. And y'all, I say y'all, this board, the only board of the justice that approved, the only two requests that have come since then, in about, both in 2015 and 2016, I have copies of them if y'all want to see them, but the staff will confirm what I'm telling you is the truth. And so, all we want to do is get the, our setbacks that are consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Neighborhood is built out about 80 percent.
Well, tell us what the Varens is, tell us how the Varens is needed to, you asking for to, you know...
Best way it is for me to give you...
Just for the record, Matt, this is part of that interpretation by Mark Davis to clean up these old subdivisions like this that we used to not come before. That's when it started in 2015.
Yes, sir.
And there's some of them, we did a whole group of them to get it so we don't have to do individually.
We did do, I think, a couple en masse for the entire subdivision. I think this is a specific lot request.
Okay.
We suggested that this should come from an association request to the planning department so you wouldn't have to be doing this on an individual basis. But let me, I can just give you the...
Mr. Matthews, I agree with you. Basically, what you asking for, the front back line, 20, the rear line is 15, that's our county, and yours is...
And the sides, because the sides are different for, in the CCRs, they allow the outbuildings, which everybody has, mother-in-laws, or cottages, or they have garages with live overs, they can go within a foot of the property lines. And by the way, this project has also gone through the architectural review approval process through the association, and they've approved exactly what you're looking at there, which was also, that's just the bigger version, I kind of highlighted, so you can point out to you what the actual dimensions are. And essentially, all I can tell you is that the way, this is a good developer that actually wanted the situs of the structures on the lots addressed in the CCRs, and that's what we followed.
But let's...
Mr. Prescott, by the way, is the architect for the association. He's been doing this for 10 years for them. He's been designing houses for 10 years, so he has probably more familiarity than anybody in this room about the setbacks and how this project's been built out.
What I want to do is get a little clarity on what exactly you're asking for.
Yeah.
You asking for the front setback, which would be White Cliffs Lane?
The front-back setback...
Did you state your name for the record?
Jeff Prescott.
Okay, Mr. Prescott.
16 and a half feet front yard setback. So a request for a 16 and a half foot front yard setback.
Wait, let, hang on, Mr. Dykes.
Yes.
Do we need to specify each side setback or what they're asking, or can we just do like we've done before, that the setbacks will be as lot as shown in the lot? What lot is this?
On the lot setback?
What lot is this?
Lot two.
I don't think that...
Two feet.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with them specifying. We can, we can identify it in the, any order if the Varens is approved, but, I mean, I don't know that I can read all of them in here, so if he just wants to clarify them and put it on the record, that way we've got some clarification.
All right, Mr. Prescott, clarify. Front setback is gonna be reduced from a 20-foot to 16.5, that's correct?
Yes.
And the right-hand setback, I guess that would be, is that west, or the 5.0, is that west?
That is the northeast setback. No, northwest, I'm sorry. West, northwest setback.
Northwest is gonna be reduced from a 7.5 to a 5.0?
That's correct.
Then the rear setback's gonna be reduced from a 15 to a 4.9?
Yeah, to 4 feet 9 inches, 4.75 feet.
4.75 feet. And then the, I guess that'd be the east is gonna be reduced from a 7 and a half to 1.114?
Yes, that's correct.
Setback, that's what you're asking for?
Yes.
As shown on the plaque of, that is recorded, is that correct?
Yes, these setbacks are greater than the setbacks required under the recorded plaque.
Right. But that's, we're going by the reported plaque?
We're in compliance with that.
With the recorded plaque?
Yes.
We could do that.
We're gonna make it part of it.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, we're making part of it. Any questions, Mr. Prescott? Jeff, you have any, you understand?
I do have a question. Is this a type 3 residence, according to their...
I'd have to, I believe it is, yes.
So it refers to paragraph 1.9, which we weren't given a copy of.
I would like to present it to you right now.
That'd be great.
This is another exhibit you touched on. This is the actual cutout from the CCR, which was a type 3, and it shows what was approved out of our lot, and then it adds the 1.9. That's what it's worth.
Are you familiar with these?
I've actually designed a house in White Cliffs, back in 1996.
But you're familiar with what the setbacks have planted?
Yes, sir.
The position we've...
You've been doing it a long time.
I know.
Yeah, he started when he was slim.
Back when they paid me in Bud Light.
There you go. Charlie, those are photos of other residents and structures in that neighborhood, I believe is what.
This is kind of standard procedure, we're doing what they call a cleanup, so I think...did you get your answer, question answered?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Prescott, we give you the opportunity to come back up when we listen to staff. Who's speaking on behalf of staff? Mr. Brown? None of Mr. Brown's on the...this is Vivian. We got out of order. Vivian, what do you think?
Well, this is one of those subdivisions that had the covenants and restrictions that had, where there was no development order in place, but the covenants had allowed for the setbacks that were created prior to 1996. And this is one of those subdivisions, this would, this variance would allow the property owner to develop according to the existing nature of the development, which would be in keeping with the development. So from planning perspective, staff would agree.
Very good. We like that. It's Christmas time, right? Anyone from the audience like to speak on this Varens? Anyone else? Mr. Matthews, do you have any final say?
No, sir, not unless the board has any question.
Any questions? Sure?
Would we be able to give a blanket variance to the whole subdivision?
Not unless they ask for it.
They have to ask for it, we can't just give it to them.
Not unless they ask for it.
Well, we're gonna, through Mr. Prescott who worked for the association, we're gonna see if we can get the association board to maybe one more request so that that happens.
Right. Matt, can the planning department, can the planning department help and assist in that effort?
Actually, that was our recommendation, let's deal with this all at one time, but due to the urgency of this particular lot, I didn't have time to get everybody participating. That would be our desire. We support the existing setbacks entrant in the covenants, it's just that we don't have the authority to recognize them under the present comprehensive plan and...
Just to add, one of the things that has happened while a couple of these subdivisions has not come through, it could be that this one, there's not that much left to build out, and the cost of the mailouts and certified is, would be up to the homeowners to cover those costs versus the individual. And one of the other subdivisions, there are condos directly next to it and so forth, and it became, you know, cost prohibitive for the homeowners associations to take those on, so they decided to let the individuals go forth.
Okay, thank you. Motion to close the type discussion?
One second. Dana, do you want to admit all these into evidence?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Staff, you want to admit your report into evidence?
Motion to close.
Are we gonna do exhibit A, exhibit B?
We'll just do, well, the...
The two handouts they gave them.
Yeah, we can, how do you want to do that, just as a composite?
Whatever it means to the board.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you say you were interested in maybe having this attached to this?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make that, it's on exhibit, as exhibit A, and then the others with the photographs, as well as the building setback information, we'll just do that as a composite piece.
Very good. So enter. Motion closed.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I believe that they've got a hardship, the county's making the encumbering this comprehensive plan in 1996 after they'd already passed their subdivision and all their stuff. I believe it's hitting the little seven points, the county's for it, there don't seem to be any objections. It's in harmony with the neighborhood, it doesn't seem to be hurting anybody that's here to object, and I think it makes the seven points pretty easily.
Mr. Burgess, you can't sit there and not say nothing first night.
I have, I have actually reviewed the covenants and restrictions myself, I'm very familiar with this subdivision, and I do believe it meets the criteria, and I concur with staff's suggestion.
Anybody else? Motion to close the discussion?
Motion to close.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve as presented on exhibit A, exhibit A, AS-1, on the setbacks. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Burgess, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews, you received your Varens?
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you. Now, we have number one be number six, so we'll start with number three. I'm messing with you, sir, come on up.
Who's on first?
Come on up.
This is a request that's been reviewed by Tim Brown, reduced rear setback from 15 to 5 feet, and I think the applicant is here to present her case.
I'm sorry. Grabbing for the board, state your name for the record.
My name is Yusuf Hadad. Good evening, members of the board. Just to clarify, the application was submitted by myself on behalf of Suzanne Hadad. The main, the intent is to request a variance to the 15-feet rear setback, according by the Walton County Land Development Code, Section 5.00, 1.03, 601.03, to reduce the setback to 5 feet for the reasonable and safe construction of a swimming pool. The main point being that the hardship is medically based, and that there should be no negative effects to the land and association as we, as the house borders, the back lot line, sorry, the back lot line borders common area. And this was not included in the...
Just so you're clear, this is anything that needed to be redacted, because this would be part of a public record? Just want to make sure. Is there anything on here that you don't want to be part of the public record?
No.
That's fine.
Do you want to go over the hardship?
Yeah.
Medical hardship?
So Suzanne suffers from a couple of ailments, mainly being severe arthritis and osteoporosis. In addition to these, she has chronic knee and hip pain that impairs her movement. Given these conditions, she is unable to engage in most types of exercises, whether lifting weights, running, brisk walks, cycling without pain. Several of her doctors have advised her to do water therapy, and that's why we had one specific doctor write this letter to be part of the, to give to the board. And the 15-foot setback doesn't allow enough space for a reasonable-sized pool to engage in exercise.
How large is your deck? Is that a six-foot deck? And is this kind of not a porch?
That, that would be decking, that would be pavers, brick, anything, it's not, there is no deck there yet, that would be part of the plan to, in the pool construction. So no deck exists yet.
So you have 6 feet from your house to the beginning of your pool?
That would, that's the plan.
The, right in the center there where it has X, is that a porch, or is that part of the roofs?
That is an enclosed, it was an enclosed porch, not totally enclosed, it was screened porch, I'm sorry. That is now opened, but that is covered under the roof and there's...
So that is a porch?
Yes.
And the pool, how large is the pool? 15 feet by, how large?
10 feet wide by 24 length.
24 by 10.
Is this lady a full-time resident in this home?
Are you the person?
Uh huh.
Is this your wife?
No.
That's my son.
That's your son?
Thank you, sir. That's a good Christmas present.
Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
Are you an attorney?
No.
You've just done a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? We give you the opportunity to come back after we get through the staff, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Brown, it's been a while, how are you?
Good evening. Tim Brown with Planning Development, I'm doing fine, thank you. Hope you're doing well. The only thing I have to add to this is unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the requested project does meet the requirement, the criteria for a variance that's set for in the Walton County Land Development.
It does?
Yes.
It calls, it calls a lot, the medical?
Well, a combination of things. One, it's, the lots are slightly smaller than the adjacent lots on either side of it. They're not quite rectangular, they're not a completely odd shape, but they're not your prototypical... They're not quite rectangular. They're not a completely odd shape, but they're not your prototypical rectangular lots. And it backs up to common area plus the medical, um, request.
What's about there on the common area?
It's conservation. It's, it, it's part of their required conservation. It's on, I don't know that they included the plat, but on the plat it says conservation.
Any questions, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Mr., uh, and you may have it, there was...
Oh, yes, I, I didn't mean, meant to mention that I passed out a, a letter of no objection for, from one of their neighbors.
That's good.
Yes, we don't get a lot of those.
No, we don't. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience like to speak on this variance request? You would? Did you come in the last meeting we had?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Uh, my name's William Shober, um, right down the street, eighty-five, Secret Harbor. I don't have a problem with them putting a pool in the house at all, and, um, the main issue I have is to come and clarify some of the information to make sure I'm, I'm understanding. Because this is a short-term rental, and, uh, hasn't been run very well, in my opinion, and it was a recent purchase sometime in the beginning of the year, and we had some spring break issues with the kids renting it. Police were called. Several things going on, which I would prefer that she's the homeowner and stays in the house and gets a pool. That would be better for me. I, I hope that's what occurs. But it's been a short-term rental up until at least four to six weeks ago. And, uh, since then, it's been empty, of course. Whether she's living there, I haven't seen any vehicles there.
How, how do you know it's been a short-term rental?
Well, it was on VRVO, and, um, it's obvious.
Just a second, we're gonna...
Yeah, I mean, you can talk to them about all that.
Oh, I will, but we're trying to get the information out of you.
Yeah, I would have actually printed all the, uh, information on VRVO, because I actually have short-term rental property in there also. But, and I also live there, live in the res, in the, in Paradise Tree also.
So are you opposed to the short-term rental?
Nope.
Uh, you just oppose to...
I'm opposed to the way it was being run, the way it's being managed.
Okay.
They were, they were allowing spring break under twenty-five-year-old kids there, which is not illegal. Uh, they were also allowing up to sixteen people in a relatively small house. And so, you know, those, those are all legal.
Sir, lady, lady, sir, hang on, hang on.
I, I, I was just gonna clarify, obviously, that goes outside the scope and the authority of this board. All they are...
Correct, correct.
Look, whoa, I just respectfully disagree with this. She's sitting there saying that she lives there, she need it for medical, and she's sitting there renting it on a, on a rental program short-term. She's not living there. And, and she provided us testimony, that is, and what he's providing us tonight, we're gonna allow him to speak. Because I personally have the issue with them presenting that she lives there, and it's a rental.
I just wanna clarify that the fact that you don't like as many people renting the home, that's outside this board's authority. The only thing we're here to speak to is whether or not this variance is gonna be granted. And, and if you believe there's evidence that needs to be solicited from the applicant, then that's fine. But, I mean, he's going into items that are not...
And I asked him to.
Right, and the only thing I'm gonna say is I, I...
What, hang on a minute. He said he has short-term rental, and then this is a short-term rental. And I'm trying to understand what is his objection if he has short-term rental. I asked him. He was explaining it. We've given him the opportunity to tell us why he has opposition to this, and, and what I'm getting out of this is that he doesn't have any opposition to the short-term rental. He has an opposition when it's being presented.
Right, and I think that's been stated. Correct. And, and, so I don't, I don't know what, what other information we need.
Because I wanted to ask him.
Or stay in the hall.
And that's why.
Okay, well, let's ask him. So I don't have, I don't have any proof, because it was taken off the VRVO site, and so I didn't have a chance to, uh, print any of the, any of the information, but you can talk, you can ask them about all that. And, um, like I said, I'm not here because of the, putting the pool in or, or anything. I'm, I'm here because it's supposed to be the residence, correct?
Right. Let me ask you a couple of questions. Are, are the majority of those homes on short-term rental in that area?
There, there's about twenty out of, um, there's, I think, a hundred and twenty units in there, a hundred and twenty homes. And I think about twenty, twenty-five are in there short-term.
And what's the difference between the way you rent short-term versus the way they do?
Well, I limit the amount of people to ten. Also, of course, during those spring bake, break periods, it's, they must be twenty-five. Someone must be twenty-five, and, and controlled. Because I live in the neighborhood too, and, and just like other people, you know, they, they, they want it peaceful and, and relatively quiet, you know? And, and, and to be honest with you, if, if, um, some of those things weren't occurring, I mean, our gates were broken, some other things. I'm not saying that their people did it or anything like that, but as, you know, we're trying to bring the property values up for everyone, not, not just to make money, you know, not just to be there. You know, I'm not just gonna rent my short-term rental to just anybody who writes me a check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a, a homeowners association that governs whether or not the houses can be on a short-term rental program?
Right, well, um, some people have actually tried to oppose, uh, some of that, however, the way the, the laws are and statutes adding, I don't know all the legal verbiage, but, um, once, um, you know, this has already occurred now, and that it's been going on for quite some time, it's, you can't, you know, you can't reverse it, nor would I want to. I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm gonna have to agree with our attorney that we're getting beyond the scope where we need to be. We're going back to, to the, the request, so we appreciate it. Thank you. You can sit down now. Yes, sir, if you would come and explain, assist us. How often do you rent it this year?
Majority of the year, but since...
Where does your mother live during that time? Where's the primary resident at?
Ninety-eight. So at the time when my mom purchased the house, my brother is, has been deployed in Afghanistan. He'll be returning shortly, and during most of that time, she was caring for his son. So, um, in order to put things off with the moving and helping with the expenses, that's what, that was the plan. And then, now that we have, we've taken it down, we're not renting it any longer. We have no bookings for next year.
Where, where is your mother's primary resident?
She is at the house, at fifty-five.
Where does she live while she was renting the house?
Ninety-eight Legion Park Loop.
And who owns that house?
She does.
So she has two houses?
Yes.
What is she gonna do with the house that, where she lives now, the ninety-eight Lincoln?
I'm probably going to live there, and there, we don't have specific plans for that house yet. It's kind of up in the air.
Well, let me ask you this. If there's a swimming pool put in this house, could you get more money on the rental market?
In general.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions?
I'm gonna use that pool. I need to use that pool. I can't swim in the ocean, Jerry.
Do you wanna stand up and, and state your name for the record?
I can only use the pool in the winter months, and I need to, I cannot swim anywhere else. I use the beach in the summertime to swim and do all my exercises, and I've been doing that all this fall. I have to have a pool that's a warm pool to be able to swim and use. That is a fact.
Can you put the pool at the other resident where you live?
No, I can't.
Why not?
Because there, I have a pond right on the other side. I mean, there's, the backyard is very short. I can't. I have to have a pool that I can use. And I'm decorating the house. I have family coming in. I have my kids coming in. My son's coming back from Afghanistan. I don't know where he, doesn't have a place to live yet.
Are you gonna put it back on the rental market?
If, possibly, possibly not, but I have to have the pool, because that is my house. I am decorating. I'm moving it. I have things there. So will it be in the future? Am I gonna say maybe ever? I'm not, I can't say that.
Would you be willing to, if, if the board so choose, you, if the pool's that important? If we make it, you know, a contingency that you can't put it on the rental market?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If the board so choose to pass the variance...
Yes.
With a contingent that you cannot put this on the rental market? Because to me, you're saying you need it, but there's history where you rented it.
That's correct.
So are you willing to take it off the rental market?
Forever?
Sure.
I can't say that, sir.
Okay.
That would be, I don't know what the circumstances are gonna be in my future.
Okay. That's just a question I had.
Of course. Yes, sir.
Anybody has any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else has anything else they had?
Before you close, the staff wanna enter into evidence, its report and all the exhibits. And Mr. Hadad, uh, if you wanna enter into evidence your, the, uh, the doctor's letter, correct?
Motion closed at that discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion. We need a motion to, either to deny it or a motion to approve it, so we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, I don't even know what I'll do. I'll make a motion to approve the variance, for the five-foot rear setback, uh, for the pool.
Second.
Discussion. We start with Phil. Now you...
Start with me. I'll, I'll do it. I have reservations about the rental part of it. Um, my, my motion was mostly so we could get this, the discussion, so I don't know that I necessarily agree with my own motion. The, everything on its face, I think the hardship is there with the, if, if we go with it being a primary residence and the need for her pool for activity and stuff like that. If she's just wanting it for, you know, to make it easier to rent, then obviously that makes it, the hardship's not there. And I think that's gonna be my key dilemma. I think all the other stuff would, would kinda meet up with the, uh, seven things of our variance request. Um, staff is here. We had little objection. The one objection that we did have, he wasn't necessarily against her having the pool, just against the, how she was renting it out. The, I guess, the programs with which she was renting it out. But I do have concerns about, you know, we grant her variance for her to swim in the pool on a medical hardship, and then it just ends up getting rented repeatedly. And that's all I got to say.
Mr. Burgess?
I think I share the same concerns. At face value, uh, it does appear to meet the criteria, and I, as I read the request and report, uh, concur with staff's recommendation. So I'm in, and even the gentleman who did express concern did not object to the rental market or the pool.
I wish I would ask a question if the property was homestead. I wish I would ask a question if it was ninety-eight homestead. It's my understanding it's not homestead. If it's not homestead, then there's a good possibility the history of this property's been a rental. I believe it's been a rental. I think that it will continue to be the rental, and I don't think that it is justifiable to take and grant this on a hardship when there's a history of a rental. I personally think it's a way to get a swimming pool in there to take and increase the rent. And I personally don't think we ought to grant the variance. I'm extremely opposed of it, because I think it's a, I think it's a way to, to, to go about a way of getting a pool that I don't feel is right.
Well, I'm, somebody's had a, I had a spinal fusion over fifty years ago, so I have empathy for people with, uh, physical ailments and need for exercise, but I'm troubled. Uh, if you recall, I asked, is it, is this gonna be lived in year-round? And was told yes, and I don't feel like that was a straightforward answer, to be honest with you. And that concerns me, and I, I believe, were I in your shoes, I'd be willing to give up the rental if I was planning on living there full-time without hesitation, so I'm, I'm troubled by that.
I think there's a history that, that it's been on the rental market and just been pulled during the time of this variance. That shows very well that it's gonna continue to be a rental. Jeff?
There are two things that concern me about this. If the pool were to be granted, and you had underage people using the house during spring break, the complaints about noise and whatnot from the neighbors would only be worse. And the second issue is the design of the pool area seems to be excessive for a pool needed to exercise. I've, I've designed recently lap pools that were six foot wide, or that have a self-propelled system that'll allow for a much smaller footprint. So I would be in favor of, of approving a much smaller, uh, exercise pool than the one that's proposed, if, if that's what's really needed. But I, I think there's some credibility issues here, and...
We've got, uh, doctor's statement saying that she needs a pool. We've got sworn statement.
Mr. Anderson, can you bring your mic down, please? Thank you.
How about that? Am I on?
You're not on, I think. Yeah, yeah. Is he? May he be on, may he be on.
Okay. And, um, we've got, uh, she was sworn under oath, tell the truth. So her testimony, and I don't have anything counter to her testimony, say that she's gonna live here, that she needs a pool. I'm going off of, of what's before us. I don't have any objections from anyone regarding the pool.
It's not, it's not a homestead property, and I have a problem with misrepresentation of the, of the code to get something that shouldn't be there.
Mr. Chairman, maybe she hadn't filed yet for homestead. She just made this decision just recently. Maybe she hadn't had time to file. I'm going off of what we know, and, and instead of speculating, I'm just going off of the evidence that's before us, that we know, the factual evidence.
What we know is that it's been a rental.
What we know is that it's not a rental today.
I agree.
So you know which way I'm leaning. I'm not leaning that way. I am in favor of it.
Anything else? Anyone else? Anybody has anything else to say?
I do think that there's, there are ways to exercise in the winter without having a pool in your backyard.
I agree, but that's her choice, not yours.
Motion closed at discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the variance as presented, to approve the, uh, ten-foot reduction and the fifteen-foot to allow a five-foot for a pool. We have a second. Mr. Anderson, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of variance request.
Jeff?
Denied.
Bill?
Very reluctantly denied.
Nay. Charlie?
I will vote. I wanna give her the benefit of the doubt. I'll, I'll vote aye.
Mr. Burgess?
Denied.
We have two in favor. We have four. Your variance has been turned down. You have thirty days after the final order is signed to appeal with the circuit court. This board's decision. Thank you very much. We have two more items or one more item?
Two more. We should have, uh, Mr., or the Huckabee variance as, as well as the D.R. Horton variance.
Who's here for the Huckabee variance?
Uh, this one was reviewed by Bob Beronte, and I think Mr. Huckabee may, or Mickey Whitaker is here to represent them.
Mr. Mickey?
Mickey Whitaker, W-H-I-T-A-K-E-R. All right, and I'm here as, uh, agent for, uh, Mr. Huckabee. I didn't know for sure if he's gonna be here or not, but, uh, he is here. Uh, he, he's applying for a variance for a Gulf Trace subdivision. Basically, to, the Gulf Trace neighborhood plan was created, and, uh, it has some stipulations in there that, um, you, you can only have heated and cooled area on two floors. And what Mr. Huckabee is proposing is his idea, his, the home that he's gonna be building would have a garage level and then two stories. Okay, but since he, 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 what he's requesting is a bathroom and a, um, treatment room downstairs for his wife who's disabled, which you gotta, I don't know if y'all have the letter from the doctor, anyway, and so that's what he's doing. I mean, that, that's a variance request of what he wants to do. Of course, he will have a pool, and that's where it's part of her... Of course, he will have a pool and as where it's part of her treatment, it should be the pool. He, he's, uh, Mr. Huckabee, I've known him for over thirty years. He's had a, him and his family's had a place down here for probably fifty years. And this, uh, is, he's chosen Gulf Trace to be the place where he's retiring to and him and his wife, family in latter years there. So he's not paying them rent and he's not doing it for profit, renting, he's not building his back house. And, you know, and on a broad term, you know, you know, i- i- the way the, the way it's written by the neighborhood plan, it, it talks about living area. He's really not putting the living area there. I mean, it's a bathroom, uh, you know, a treatment room and, but it will be heated and cooled. So, you know, you can interpret that, you know, but however you, you know, choose to. Uh, one, one of the issues on this property also is that it does sit within the, um, the coastal dune lake three-hundred feet. And so you do have a limited, you know, footprint that you can have a house on. So, I mean, he's not building an enormous house. It's going to be, you know, basically, you know, he gets to cover forty percent of his lot with a, with this pool and structure.
Help me understand what you're asking for, Mickey.
Okay.
You're asking somewhere down there they can only have two, two floors.
Two stories of a he- a heated and cooled space.
And that's because of why?
Because that's the neighborhood plan.
That's in the ne- neighborhood plan.
Neighborhood plan. And what he wants to do is on his first garage floor level is to have a bathroom and a treatment center for his wife.
Wait a minute. You're asking for a variance on the first floor level to have a heated area?
To he, have a.
You're asking for a variance.
Heated area, you know.
First floor, how many square feet?
How many square feet is that? Five hundred, four seventy-five, five hundred.
So you have no problem restricting this to a five-hundred first-floor heated area? Five hundred, that's going to cover it, is that correct? Five hundred square feet. And that five hundred square feet is going to be a bathroom and a treatment room? Because of a medical condition, is that correct?
Correct.
Because you already have a pool?
Pardon?
Is the pool in?
No, the house hasn't been built.
Are you going to have, are you going to ask for a pool variance?
No.
You don't have to. You're just asking for this heating.
Just the heated and cooled area.
And all that's underneath the structure?
Right.
And you restrict it because of, uh, the coastal dune lakes.
Right, right.
And that's the hardship?
Well.
That's the hardship.
The hardship is a medical thing. I mean, I mean, you.
You got all kinds of hardships.
Yeah, I've heard all over.
I see it. I see it in your eyes.
Yeah. But, uh, but yeah, but the, you know, I mean, because, you know, there's a combination of hardships, you know? The main one is the neighborhood plan because, you know, as far as the land development code, it's fine, you know? But the neighborhood plan, for some reason, you know, they, they chose to write that language in there.
Any questions? Any further explanation?
Do we have the authority to, to overturn the HOA decision? Do we have approval from the HOA?
Well, it, well, it's, uh, it's, it's in the land development code is the reason we were told to get a variance because it's, uh, the neighborhood plan became part of the land development code.
Let's get the county.
Oh, okay.
Mickey, let, let the county go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the reason this is in the neighborhood plan is this neighborhood plan replaced expired covenants and this was language that was in the original covenants and restrictions for this subdivision. That's why this specific language is in there. It was adopted, um, by the neighborhood and adopted by the county and incorporated into the neighborhood plan component of the land development code.
And we can grant the variance that is.
Yes, sir. If you deem it as a hardship circumstance.
That, that answer your question, Jeff?
And, and just a step further, because, uh, uh, Mr. Huckabee has no desire, I mean, you know, if you drove through the neighborhood, you granted this variance and you drove through the neighborhood and once this house is completed, you cannot tell there's any difference, you know? I mean, there, there, it's not a showable variance because we've got pictures of, you know, there's many, many homes in Gulf Trace. I don't know if you've been through there. They've, you know, probably fifty percent of the homes, I don't know the exact percentage, are the same way. I mean, already, the existing homes already have this. And that's why I'm surprised it's even in the neighborhood plan.
I'm sorry, you're saying, excuse me, you're saying that fifty percent of the homes have, already have heating and cooling on that first level?
Yeah, I, I don't, don't quote me on the fifty percent, but.
A large number.
A, a, a lot of them.
Okay.
I think this is the first time this ever come to us. I've never heard of this, I don't think.
So, but there's, there's a significant amount of homes with like at least a garage on the bottom and two stories above it?
Forty-six pictures here of homes.
So you, so if something were inside that garage and this, essentially you wouldn't see what was in the garage?
Right.
Whether there's a bathroom or not.
And, and like I say, I don't know if they're all, if all of them have heated and cooled areas downstairs. I know a lot of them do. You know, I mean, they're.
But, but there's a.
But what I'm saying architecturally, you know, you know, yeah.
Would staff say that there was, uh, a lot of, uh, houses, like was a garage allowed and then two stories on top heated and cooled?
We'll ask them when they get there.
Parking underneath is allowed.
Okay.
An enclosed garage, providing it's not heated and cooled, would still comply with this neighborhood plan.
Mickey laid a thought to the county, then you can come back.
Okay.
Evening, sir. Bob Beronte, planning staff. I'll just quickly go over the staff findings of the report. The project is, the request does not meet the criteria of, of a variance set forth in the land development code. The building is not built. I mean, there was no, I mean, there's other options than that lot in the neighborhood that the regulations exist already. It would be different if, if it was a different area and they came later to ask, but staff doesn't feel that it, it meets the, the hardship definition.
What are the other options that you're talking about?
Well, uh, if you chose, if you chose to approve it, I guess you could set a timeline that said that it would have to be removed if there's no longer a medical need for that. But then how are you going to enforce that?
I, I have an issue that, uh, we just had one various request and their medical was accepted by the county being justified for it. Now you're saying that this medical is not to be justified for it. I have an issue with that.
Well, sir, the, the house is not built.
Well, he can't build a house if he gets this in his plans. He can't go with, uh, go get a plan until he knows what he can do.
Well, that'll be up to the.
And we will make sure that a variance is passed. If it's, if it does pass by the board, that it's could, it's going to be passed, that he builds a house as presented in the plan for the use that he's so used, desired to say that he's going to use it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I have more credibility that they're going to, they can do what they're saying they're going to do because there's not a history of anything different than the previous case that come before us.
Well, I don't disagree.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Charlie, you have some questions? Sir? Charlie has some questions?
I had a question for, uh, the plaintiff again.
For who?
For Mickey, I guess.
Okay. County, Sydney?
I guess just real briefly, um, and, and just to clarify the point, but not to belabor it. I think what Mr. Beronte was trying to say is that this is a situation where the applicant could have picked any lot in the area to build their home. And so Mr. Beronte was just trying to point out that it's vacant now and when they purchased this lot, they could have, um, I guess done some due diligence on what the requirements were in that particular neighborhood. I think that was Mr. Beronte's point.
We appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mickey?
Could I, could I ask Sydney though?
Sure.
You're saying, uh, there are other options that could, are there, there's no lots in there that they could build that wouldn't have to conform to?
No, sir, not in this particular neighborhood, but I guess that, that is, there are other neighborhoods.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a, go ahead, Jeff.
I've got one more question for Sydney. In HOA law, if there are other homes that were given the privilege of being a full three stories, which a lot of the homes in Gulf Trace are in fact three-story homes, are they, are we not subject to having to allow them the same privileges of the other members of that association?
No, sir. No, sir. And, and this is a, this is actually not a situation where we have that HOA. This is a situation where there's a neighborhood plan. So the neighbors, um, without an HOA have asked the county to adopt a neighborhood plan and that's enshrined in our land development code and that's why we need to, or why the applicant would need a variance.
Go ahead, Ms. Beronte.
I was just going to, uh, point out probably, uh, what staff was getting at, I believe, as well as Ms., uh, Noise was that, you know, when you're looking at the hardship, you're looking at a, at a present hardship. As in the first one, they had the house built. Hey, look, we can't build out here. You have a home that has not been built. And I think the idea is there's no current present hardship until the house is built and then they want to put in this, this portion. They could take that out, come back and apply for the variance. So it's kind of one of those where you're kind of doing it before you even have the, have the structure built. See what I'm saying? Like, I wouldn't need a setback until I'm going to, you know, build a house or I'm going to build the, and in this case that. So I think that's kind of the, the idea is when you're looking at the hardships, you're looking at what's the present hardship, uh, being presented to the board, so.
You never know what is going to, when you say you can go buy a lot. I mean, you know, I don't know the circumstances, when he bought the lot, how he bought it, and it's not really relevant. But I do think it's relevant when you're trying to buy. You say that this lot does not mean he could buy another lot. It may be the area that he likes, it may be the price that he bought it at, it may be the size of it. So I don't think you can sit there and say that he, this lot doesn't qualify for the variance because he could buy other lots, because we don't know the circumstances that he purchased the lot. So I, I have an issue with this, with that.
Mickey?
Yes.
And we do have a letter, I hope y'all have a letter from the president of HOA or.
Read it, Mickey, read it.
What makes you think I can read? I can only talk. Okay, it says, uh, "Dear Mr. Huckabee, please accept this writing with regards to your pending variance request with Walton County. Upon review, the Board of the Gulf Trace Homeowners Association find nothing objectionable to your request. We welcome you to Gulf Trace and wish you well as you move forward with your new home."
And it's your testimony here tonight that this is house needs, is, is in the plans of being built. He's going to build it, he's going to live there. There is a medical condition. You have a letter in our folder, do you have that? Can you tell us where it's at?
The medical letter?
Medical letter.
I got copies of it.
You have, you have copies of it.
That's this one.
I've got copies if you need it.
Well, I just want, that's going to be, uh, the UC Davis Medical Center in California.
You should have actually three, uh, pieces of paper that are all marked number two at the top. Those are all associated with this variance request. I saw another one here somewhere.
And this is due to, to his, uh, to his wife?
You should have a doctor's letter, the, uh, letter that he just read from, from Gulf Trace Owners Association, and then another letter, uh, I believe an email, uh, objecting, uh, from a Ms. April, uh, Michelle.
So basically this letter, the main thing that he needs is, is a restroom.
Right.
Availability of the restroom because of the medical condition.
She has, you know, a, a treatment center where she has the treatment equipment, you know?
And a treatment center?
Yeah.
And it's not going to be converted to a rental?
No.
And it's not going to be converted to a kitchen?
No.
It's for this purpose?
Right.
And y'all willing to put, make sure that it's in the language? You don't have no problem with that?
I mean, he's, he's right here.
All right. Go ahead, Jeff.
Question about the, the treatment room. Is it like a, is, what, what exactly is a treatment room? Is it like a bedroom?
I'm going to leave that up to him because I, I, I have no medical.
What's that?
Stand up, come up and state your name for the record, Mr. Whitaker.
Can I make a brief statement, please, sir? I'm sorry, this is, this is, uh, this is a big deal for us. I've had two great love affairs in my life. One was fifty-seven years ago. As, as a child, I came here for the first time and I had been here on and off throughout my entire life. I've seen fifty-seven years' worth of changes. I, I, thirty, thirty-four years ago, I had the second grade affair. She's right there.
Was that your wife?
Yes, yes, sir. And as we spent time down here, we grew into the community, we became part of the community and we both had incredibly busy and demanding careers.
If you want, you want to wait the staff gets through so we can hear you?
I'll, I'll wait.
Are y'all done? Go ahead, Ms. Whitaker.
Thank you. Thank you. And in the process over time, like Mickey said, I, I, we've known each other for over, you know, close to thirty years and, and with our careers, we sat, made a lot of sacrifices, uh, in different areas. But that's what life is about to a certain extent. And when we reached the point that, uh, we just basically said, "It's time. The mule needs to go to the barn." And that's what we did. Well, as life progresses, a lot of things, good and bad, progress. About seven years ago, she was diagnosed, uh, excuse me, with a chronic severe progressive disorder. And basically the fight is to prevent, uh, I won't say catastrophic, but very, uh, disabling surgery. And she is and has been permanently disabled. Is she helpless? Oh, hell no. Make no mistake. But she is severely disabled. And her treatment, uh, consists of daily therapies, multiple therapies. The best of which probably what we would say is normal therapy, uh, would be physical therapy and swimming. We were both swimmers. That, the, the pool is set up for one reason, laps. And be able to utilize, at specific depth, so that she can utilize it for different aerobic, less weight bearing and less impact on her body for that reason. As far as the treatment room, I believe you asked a question. As far as the treatment room is considered, she, if you read the letter, uh, she has to have just, when, when her, uh, symptoms occur, they occur spontaneously and they're explosive and they are uncontrollable. And she has to have immediate access to restroom facilities. And likewise, when they occur during treatment, those have to be set up. We're retiring down here. This is our last home. And, and, and no, the, the rental, no, that's, that's not an option. Uh, you know, if a family comes in and stays, yeah, but I mean, it, it's not going to be a rental. I can, I can assure you of that. Uh, I don't, you know? The treatment room consists of an area, one that is readily, uh, accessible to cleaning and height, uh, being, disinfects cleaning and will have tables and certain types of equipment. Her, her therapies include, uh, adaptive physical therapy, uh, as, as well as certain, uh, activities, deep tissue manipulation, uh, deep organ manipulation, rolfing, I don't know if you're familiar with that, where the organs actually are manually, uh, manipulated to maintain mobility. The other therapies for range of motion, other therapies for, just to allow her to perform what we would call just normal, uh, activities of daily living. Little things that we don't even think of like range of motion. We try to use that as little as possible because the old saying is true. Once you go in a chair, you don't come out of it. And that's very, that's very disheartening. And yet, yet there are times when the inflammation and when the swelling gets to the point where you just, it, it, I mean, coughing, she's, she's broken ribs. I'm not, I just, with the violent coughing, uh, or the cramps.
Hang on, Ms. Huckabee. Do y'all get it? Y'all get it?
Yeah, I, can I make a quick comment though about the lot? Uh, I believe if I was looking in that neighborhood for a lot and saw a large percentage of the homes already set up the way you're talking about. homes already set up, the way you're talking about having heating and cooling space downstairs, I wouldn't think it would be a problem to do that with my home. And I don't know if that's what you went through or not.
I never dreamed of it, quite honestly. It's like, of course, you know?
Yeah.
Because there are so many homes. I went, going back to Mickey's statement, I went by and photographed the homes, the pictures he had today. Over 80 percent, I think I counted between 17 and 20 homes, or 14 to 17, I'm sorry, there were some that I couldn't count because of the lot, that they were just lots, and there were some that I couldn't trespass on and find it. But I looked for indications of air conditioning, of living space, and I found close to 80 percent there, three-story-plus homes. And I just, I would have never thought, you drive by the neighborhood, you just wouldn't even, it wouldn't even occur to you. And this is something, we both worked in the caregiving fields, and we're aware of these things, and it didn't occur to any of us at all. The one reason, you know, we... As far as the lot, we weren't really that interested in the Gulf view as per se. It was the unique view of the lake and the Dune system, and to be able to have... Both of us, be able to enjoy that view, and to be able to appreciate that view, and if this does become a permanent reality, is, it's easy to say, "Well, you can find another lot." Well...
Ms. Huckabee?
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna cut you short, but I think, you know, that the board gets the understanding that this is a true medical condition.
Oh, yes, sir.
I think the board understands that you was not expecting this when you purchased the lot. I think that the board understands that there are unique circumstances, and I think the board understands, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I hope I answered your question.
You did. You did.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
When exactly did you... When exactly did you... Okay. When exactly did you purchase the lot?
It was, I think we closed in August.
The last deed of record...
September?
Yeah, the last deed of record on the property appraiser's website shows, well, it was recorded on October 6th in the name of ADE 785 LLC.
I'll go with Mickey's word on that. He said correct, so I'll go on that.
It's dated September 29th, and your application's dated September 28th. So it appears to me as though you purchased this lot knowing that you were going to have to apply for, well, simultaneously with the idea of purchasing it, knowing you it wasn't going to meet the criteria of what you wanted to build.
I'm sorry, I can't do the math the way you're doing it right now, but I will say again, under oath, I had no idea. I...
Well, I can jump in here and explain. Yeah, we were under contract to purchase the lot, you know? We closed on, I don't know what the date or whatever, we applied for the application prior to closing of the lot.
Okay. And you were diagnosed seven years ago. The only site plan that is submitted shows a first-floor level with an HVAC, an HVAC square footage of 858 square feet on the first floor.
I'm sure...
That may be a different one.
We changed back for, as I told Mr. Johnson, I believe you were personally asked a question, if we said 500 feet, that's what I'm... There's a thing called a budget that I go on this, and I think that's where we got that.
So you have no house plans at present, no design, no conceptual, no floor plan?
Got rough, yeah, conceptual, but the house is 35 feet wide, and the length that we're talking about is 13 feet, and, you know, that comes out to just under 500 feet. And that's what we're looking at.
I kind of find it hard to see a hardship before an existing condition. It's just my thoughts, sir.
Sir, with all due respect, the hardship has been around for over seven years. The condition's been around, and I have, in the process of putting in our offer or purchasing the property, when we identified the property and moved toward purchasing it, as I said, we had no clue that there would be a problem, because we drove around the, I'm sorry, we drove around the neighborhood and saw 75 to 80 percent of all the homes. You just wouldn't even consider it an issue. At what point, that I made some kind of plans for this, make plans all the time when you're with a disabled person. You look at accommodations, you look at plans all the time. And I can't answer your question perfectly, because I just don't have that perfect knowledge available in front of me, and I apologize for that.
Collins? Okay. Vivek answered my question. Have you purchased the lot in roughly in August, September?
We are going to move along. Ms. Huckabee, anything else you want to add? Anybody else?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why was this Walton County building sketch provided? Because it is not the same house as the floor plan that was provided to us.
This house is not the same.
That's my house, for saying, I didn't think I included it, because it's my house. I thought it was her footprint.
But this is of another house in that phase that's on the property appraisers' website?
It was, when I started going through, just a little calendar, okay? When I started going through...
The question of the first step is the only objection. This one.
The house is basically 35 feet by 48 something feet, basically, lots.
Because I'm working on a Gulffront renovation in that neighborhood right now, and I just happened to drive by this lot, which I wouldn't normally do, and I've seen that the lot's already cleared. And I'm also wondering why, if it's your personal residence, it's being held in an LLC.
Okay, I... He did a 1031 exchange by the law, and he had a house in Segal, and so that's why it's in an LLC, because his 1031, he had built a house, and his 1031 is derivative, that's why it's in an LLC. And the question, second question?
That's great.
And it was seen prior to him closing of the lot.
Does it matter if it's in LLC? Not to me. I mean, does it matter?
No, we're just trying to establish credibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Huckabee.
Thank you, John.
Mickey, anything you want to add?
No, I got a question. I mean, I understand what the [inaudible]. You know, we're by the various, you know, that's what he wants to build, and he did not know, unfortunately, that, you know, he couldn't do that when he put a contract.
Charlie has a question for staff.
We had one objection letter. It had a height component to the height of the whole overall building.
It was number two? It is. There was an email that's...
And they were saying that there was a, you originally had, since his formal request is enclosed in the area, future home, he had made an informal request to allow the increase of the height of the proposed structure. This variance has nothing to do with him increasing the height of the structure beyond...
This is just for the...
Just for the...
Put a limit on it, the heated and cooled area.
On the bottom floor. Okay. It has nothing to...
There's still a 45-foot height limit in this particular neighborhood plan for the subdivision, and there may have been some interest in asking for a height variance, but that is not part of the request at all.
Okay.
Anything else? Time up, Stephen, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No.
No, sir.
Anything? Any opposition? Anyone from the audience want to speak? Motion closed at the first discussion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is just clarify, it seems like there's probably just the one issue of the hardship and the questions that surrounded it. I would just direct the board's attention to one of the criteria that needs to be found. That is, that there must be a proof of unnecessary hardship, and this goes to Mr. Burgess's question, that in that, the code says, "It is not sufficient proof of unnecessary hardship to show greater profit will result from the variance granted. Furthermore, the hardship cannot be self-created," semicolon, "nor can it be established on this basis by one who purchases with or without knowledge of the restrictions," and goes on. So I think that was kind of where the question was.
We appreciate that, but Mr. Fletcher, you want to take, you're the one making the motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to take in your motion that you grant the variance, that the variance will be approved due to the hardship by the letter that was entered into record from the doctor from Sacramento, California, that the bathroom, the heated area would be no larger than 500 feet, and that's the heated area and cool area of the bathroom, and...
I make a motion to approve, as stated by Mr. Johnson.
Can I just add very quickly that the plans as drawn, the stairs, the elevator shaft, the entry foyer, that area is 500, is that area of the 568 square feet, and then you've added on to the back? So the ground floor is actually 858. So we're approving 858 heating-cooled square feet in the ground.
He said in his testimony that the plans that were submitted was a little larger than what he's requesting. He stated hundreds, he stated that he would be happy with 500 square feet heated and cooled. That's his testimony.
I thought it was 560 something or...
It's gonna be about 870 square feet, so if you want that...
We're not gonna open it back up for public discussion, and do you want it to be 800? I have no problem 875 feet. You want to do that? But we do need to take, we need to put the square footages in it. It need to be 500 and 800. Tell us what your expert opinion is.
What I see in the plan that was provided, you have about 500 square feet in the two-car garage, so the rest of that ground floor is closer to 860, as it says in the area schedule.
That's in total, the total.
Total heated and cooled, with the foyer, the stairs, the elevator shaft, the treatment facility, and the transition from the garage to the treatment.
And what I would point out is, I mean, this is why normally you wait for the structure to be built or close to being built. That way, you know exactly how many feet to provide for the variance. So it's very important for the board, if they're gonna go forward with potentially granting this variance, we clarify, as Mr. Chick says, to, because if we give them 500, and they come, they're gonna come back later.
We're gonna give them 860 square feet.
If they've cleared the lot, there's gotta be plans for this house that we should probably look at.
Well, I mean, these plans specifically say not for construction, so I mean, I don't know.
Do you have the motion of the variance?
No. And just for clarification, you already had one motion and a second to approve the variance as requested, so just for clarification, do you want to withdraw that motion so we can make a new motion?
Mr. Fletcher?
I will withdraw the original motion and make the motion with the understanding that it meets the criteria that Mr. Johnson spelled out.
That the motion for the hardship is by the doctor's letter submitted from Sacramento, California, dated 10/9/17, that the medical condition justifies a variance to the, as presented, to be 860 square feet for a bathroom and treatment for his wife's illness. That work, Karen? 860 square feet. If the structure is not built by the petitioner, then the variance will be discontinued from the property. It will not be passed along.
So is that part of your motion, Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Now, we need a second, a second, second in that motion.
Did you get that, Karen? We're gonna talk about it. We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Phil, you made it. Do you have any discussion?
I've said I think all I need to say.
Jeff?
I think that it's compelling that nobody from the neighborhood objects to it, and that entire neighborhood, they are, in fact, all three-story homes. It doesn't violate any setbacks. It's not an issue of a short-term rental or any of that. It's a compatible home to the fabric of that community with no objections from the neighborhood.
Mr. Anderson?
I think there's a...
I'm script with these, I'm sorry.
I have not actually visited the neighborhood, but if the testimony is that it's compatible, and Mr. Chick has actually viewed or witnessed other homes that have the same type, okay, then I'm of understanding.
Mr. Charlie?
I think there's a definite hardship with the medical problems that they have. I can't see how it would impact the neighborhood and the fact that it's enclosed in the garage, and you really wouldn't see it anyway. I mean, like, unless you're with a flashlight going in people's garages, you wouldn't know it from the road.
Speak up, Charlie.
And I think there's a definite hardship. I think it impacts it, and I'm inclined to go along with it.
Motion closed, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, before you do, you had said that, or I'm sorry, Mr. Fletcher, it was your motion, so the structure must be built or the variance expires. I mean, is there a timeframe on that, or is it just indefinite? Because...
I would say it's indefinite.
To that.
We're just saying, if it isn't built, that it expires.
This variance is for Mr. Huckabee to build a structure. If he sells the lot, it does not go with the land.
Okay.
It's for a medical use for his wife, and it's up to them to build it.
Well, that's enough clarification, because when you grant a variance, the variance runs with the property.
Right.
Unless there's a special condition, which you, now, is that correct, Mr. Fletcher? That's part of the motion?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so I'm just trying to make the record clear.
And that I might understand, it's non-transferable.
Right.
Okay.
Close it for discussion.
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve. I think everyone understands our motion. Mr. Anderson had it, but Jeff?
Aye.
Mr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You got your...
Mr. Johnson, before the applicant leaves, you had mentioned that Mr. Huckabee may be transferring this into his personal name, him and his wife's name, out of the LLC, is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm asking is if it transfers to yourself individually or another LLC, that could be in violation of the order, since it...
I had it in a trust.
Okay. Do you plan to transfer it? That's what I'm asking you, sir.
I'm gonna listen to my attorney, that's why I got creative.
Okay.
See, I was confused, I thought it was in a 1031, because when he sold his house to Segal...
And I'm not suggesting that you need to transfer it out of the trust. I was just asking the question. That way, if someone pulls the records and there's a...
Is anyone gonna do it as...
Hang on, Mickey.
Is this thing, or William Huckabee?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I just want to do it.
The trust is in my name.
Let me clarify something. If I remember the motion that Mr. Fletcher made, that the variance stays with the property as on, as it is in the name of Mr. Huckabee, or where he owns 100% of a LLC corporation of trusts.
Right.
Where he's in total control. Where he's in total control of any entity that he may transfer to. But if he sells it to an outside party...
The lot.
The lot, yeah, then it's not transferable. That was your motion?
That's correct.
That's why I heard it.
That work.
That's why you heard it, Mr. Knight? I thought so. Thank you.
Well, we'll get it ready.
Good luck to you. Last item, I believe, who's, Mr. Horton? Is this the Horton? D.R. Horton variance? They leave, Matt?
Yeah, if you could give us just a moment.
We can't do that.
Can we take a five-minute break?
We're gonna be gone.
Can we take a...
We're gonna take a 15-minute break. Does that help you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to make a statement of correction to the staff report. This item was advertised requesting a three-inch variance to the east side setback, and that would be a request to reduce the side, that side setback from five feet to 4.75 feet. So the staff report where it refers to a rear setback or a front setback, that should be the side setback, the east side setback, and the request is to reduce it by three inches from the five feet that is allowed to 4.75 feet.
Very good. We made that correction.
And the applicant is here to make their case.
Motion to approve.
Pretty quick. Thanks for seeing me, Mark. My name's Derek Hanno. I'm one of the managers over at... Derek Hanno, H-A-N-O. I'm one of our construction managers that oversees Walton County. We're just here requesting a approximately three-inch variance to the east side of a setback, simply due to a mistake we made on a steel wall block foundation, where it appears that our guys pulled a string, and my guessing, and my experience tells me he got on the other side of the string and calls us to be about three inches out. So that's what we're here to do. I came and met with Ms. Vivian. She kind of helped walk me through the process of the picture-taking and the information gathering, so this was my first shot at this here in Walton County, so I hope I have everything that you need to make this request.
This is your first shot?
Yes, sir.
It's amazing to me the houses that she felt that you might have been here before.
We've built a few in Walton County, yes, sir, but we've been...
Y'all don't want making all the money.
Well, we'd like to say we're providing a lot of tax dollars here to Walton County.
But it is a pleasure from sitting on this floor and seeing things in the past, not only that, but you're not having mistakes.
Yes, sir.
But y'all do a good job.
Well, thank you for saying it.
We're glad this is your first time.
Yep, thank you for saying it. We certainly have all the challenges that come with being a big builder, and mistakes made, and roof leaks and warranty issues that come along with being a home builder, so... But thank you for saying it, and I think this is our first time that we've made a, this is a pretty big deal. The home is at, well, we went to call our framing inspection, where we discovered, you know, during our foundation survey, that we were wrong. So we've been at a stall here. Yes, sir.
Hey, Derek, I'm looking at your foundation survey, and the front setback's supposed to be 20 feet, and this is calling out 19.51. Do you also want a six-inch variance for the front setback?
Well, let me get this thing out here. I'm glad we can do that, because it's one of the...
Right. We can't do that? No?
May I make a clarification? May I make a clarification?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
You'll get used to it, Mr. Burgess.
All right. Actually, from the other side of the fence, I have a couple times. All right, I have reviewed the subdivision flat, and we actually produced it. It is a PUD. The front setback is 10 feet, the rear setback is 10 feet, and the side setbacks are 5 feet. And I'm in favor of granting the variance, but I think it needs to be worded that the south side setback be reduced from 5 feet to 4.69 or 4.6, something that would qualify the 4.69, not necessarily 4.75. That wouldn't necess, that would not, that would still be in violation.
Half inch?
Yes, sir.
Yep, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, 4.75 is not...
You still have...
4.69.
Yes, if you're 4.69, you're even closer.
Okay.
Why don't we say 4.5?
Amen.
They'll have skirt boards and...
Yes, 4.5 would be a better idea.
I hate to point this out, but we've only advertised a three-inch variance, so...
So we got a three inches...
Explain to her, explain her the foot, the...
Okay. Yeah, the...
Three inch equals seven, seven feet.
Yeah, that's only gonna be about 2.5 or 0.25, 25 hundredths of a foot. So you really have about, call, even if you round it to four point, call it 4.7, three tenths of a foot is about four inches.
But they said that you advertised it. We can grant other variances. It's been advertised, we can, we don't have to go exactly by the variance, and you're only talking about this little, little bit, so...
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you pointing that out.
Sure, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, and we too were having trouble with the calculations, even as a construction manager, trying to figure out exactly what the variance we needed to request for.
Well, why don't, why don't we change it from decimals to inches?
Oh, please don't do that.
What's wrong with that?
Surveyors don't work in architecture.
Well, we need to get them in shape.
Do we, do we have any more evidence? Do you want to close that portion so you can discuss how you want to attack that?
Um, I'm sorry, sir.
Do you have anything else you want to...
No, sir, just I have probably exactly what you have. I just brought a small package of the plot plan and the pictures that we took that was required for the application, and that's, you know, the fact that I can just say that we are sitting at a framing stage with plumbing, AC and electric, and if granted permission, you know, we'll move forward.
You stop construction.
Sir?
You stop the construction.
Yes, sir, yeah. We've been, we've been on hold now for, since nine, since September. Yes, sir, we stopped, yes, sir.
We're gonna listen to staff, and you can come back.
I got a quick question. Who caught the error?
Our surveyor. So we did, when we sent, when we sent in for, am I right about this, Vivian?
Foundation survey.
Sir?
Foundation survey.
Yes, sir. When we sent in for our foundation survey, that you required to get our framing inspection, our surveyor called and says, "Hey, you got an issue." So at that point, I came and met with Ms. Vivian to say, "What do I do?"
Who's the surveyor?
In this case, it was Butler, I believe. Yes, sir, yeah. So I've got a little match going on where Butler says their pins were not right, and my contractor says they, my, Butler says they were right, and my contractor says they were not right, but we'll deal with that on the outside.
Karen, staff, Vivian?
Yes, this appears to clearly be hardship, and so staff has no objections.
Why is, why is it Vivian gets the ones that y'all agree, and other people get the ones that they don't understand?
Had the luck at the draw, and I'm sorry for the error on the staff report. I had jet lagged when I came in last Wednesday, so...
That happens.
Yeah.
Are these the homeowners here? Do you have any objections?
They provided a...
Hang on a minute. We threw it to staff. We would give them off the thing, come up the street.
I'm Beth Tyler, and this is my husband, Alex, and we live next door at 254 Gulfview Circle. And we've already made efforts to work with D.R. Horton and have worked with them very, very well. But our objection on this is based on risk, the fact that there are some commitments that are not fulfilled to us, and making an exception for one of those commitments, although mere inches, it is an exception, and just the inconvenience that we've gone through for quite a long period of time. And I work in a world of devil's advocacy or Murphy's Law, what can happen will. We're not planning too many times soon, but let's say we went to sell our home, and a very astute buyer comes out there with a measuring tape and finds out that wall-to-wall, it's not 10 inches, it's nine feet, nine inches, or eight inches, or whatever it may be. We went out, we came up with nine feet, eight inches. Probably depends on where along the wall you cite that tape. Then they might say, "We don't want to buy your home, blow a sale," or, "We'll buy your home, but come off the price $10,000," or whatever. How do, you know, how do we know? But that could happen. Well, we're willing to accept that risk if Horton will make certain exceptions, because when we purchased the home, we understood that wall-to-wall, we had 10 feet and nothing less, and now we don't have that. But also, too, there is a warranty period for which we're within until the end of this year, 12/31/17. There are warranty items that they're working on now, but they've only been sped up because of this issue that we really want to have finished. We have the inconvenience of things like paint overspray on our home.
I'm only taking, our issue here tonight is to grant the variance or deny the variance.
Okay.
Are you opposed to the variance if you are, the reasons why you are? We're not gonna get into, you know, what needs to be done.
Okay. We are in favor of the variance if we can make sure that our warranty items are gonna be completed and that we're compensated for the inconvenience that we have suffered, because we, our landscaping has been damaged.
You are a neighbor.
Next door.
You're the neighbor next door.
Right.
And you don't have a problem with variance as long as they take care of your house.
That is correct, and I want to make sure they do. Horton hires great people, but D.R. Horton's a public company. They're big, and if you don't speak up for yourself, you don't get what you're promised.
This is kind of interesting. Let's just give you the opportunity to ask, are y'all gonna take care of her issues?
Well, I think that we, I think last night there was an email sent from one of my other managers, our vice president of operations, to Mr. Tyler. I think I copied all of that and read my phone up here, where we have agreed that once we get going again, that we would redo the landscaping. It is small quarters to work in, and of course, for the, at this point, since we don't have framing inspection, we haven't been able to install our party. Mr. and Ms. Tyler, when they closed, they bought a very nice fence. I don't know exactly what it is, but very costly on their part. And they were a little reluctant, and I agreed with them when I went to meet with them, about putting it up, because not much room to work, we can damage it, things like that. So you and I, and we've all been in agreement that, you know, they wanted to wait, certainly their choice, but that might be a good idea. But we've already agreed to do any cleanup on the side of that home. I think there's bits of irrigation. Is there irrigation that's possibly repaired, their irrigation on that side, repair any dead plants? We've already put this in writing that any damage to the side of the home that we will do, we're just...
It sounds like they're making an effort to do what you asked them to do.
They're, they're making an effort, but it was only sped up because of this issue, and this email just came yesterday. We just want to keep the force that it does continue. And, you know, we do feel like, because we've had money down on this fence and we can't put it up, that we should have some compensation for that fact as well, and that's something that they're not wanting to agree to.
Well, that's, you know, that's beyond our scope.
Yeah.
We're here, you know, we really...
Well, this is not something I do every day, so I have to hear what your position is.
We really cannot face this, this variance if this court approves it, that they would continue to work to satisfy your wishes. We can't do that.
Yeah. What I was hoping is before the house is permitted to close, you could make sure that we are satisfied.
We can't.
We can't do that.
Okay.
That's been done, what this court can do.
Okay.
We're gonna grant the variance, and we're gonna trust that they've never been before us before. They build a lot of houses. They do something right where we would have heard from them before now. And I'm hoping and trust that they would do what they say they would do, that they put in right.
I'm Alex Tyler, the best husband, the neighbor. One thing, though, that Beth mentioned is obviously if it comes up where we're gonna sell our home, with the experience on your board, we've never been in a situation like this. Is this gonna affect the resale value of our home because of this variance?
It is fine, as far as these in the rental state market, it will not affect your property value whatsoever.
Okay.
Charlie, your opinion, or your opinion?
My opinion is that we're not, if you get a, if they have a legal variance...
Dean, you feel the same way?
Darrell.
Oh, my bad.
Mr. Burgess.
I do feel it would, should not impact the value of the home resale because you would have a legal variance in effect.
Do y'all know if there's anything in the fire code that would have an issue because of the even closer proximity of one home to the other?
No.
No. I believe it's five, five feet.
If there's anything in the fire code that can, we brought that up in our attention, and they would have dealt with that. It would not affect the fire whatsoever.
And this variance is not anything that's going to be recorded on our title that would be discovered in a title abstraction, no matter how detailed the search is into history.
Pardon me?
This has nothing to do with your title.
Okay.
Nothing.
All right. We just, we want all of this on the record, so that's why we're here.
We appreciate you coming.
And we're trying to protect ourselves.
I understand.
You should. And I hope we have answered your questions.
Okay.
Well, based on all the feedback and whatnot, we're definitely in favor of the variance, because we want to move on with our life and what we work.
I mean, when this started, we just wanted the house built. It's just been sitting for so long that, you know, we want to get on with it.
Well, if we didn't grant this variance, it would really delay it.
Oh, exactly.
Exactly, and if there was, was, was some even stronger reason for our issues, the delay would not be a problem.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on.
Is there anything else you want to, you'd like to add? Motion closed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We gotta have a, we're gonna, what?
Second? Who's second?
Second.
Jeff.
Are we going to, motion to approve it at 4.75 or 4.25?
Oh, good question.
We're gonna ask the rest.
4.5. I would clarify that we make a motion to approve the variance from 5 feet to 4.5.
So you're gonna rescind your motion?
I amend my motion to approve with a four and a half, four feet and...
4.5 feet.
4.5.
Just so we're clear, the variance would be half, half in it, half a foot.
Half a foot.
So that's what, that's what the variance is, not four and a half feet.
I can't say six inches, but...
Just, it would be six inches or half a foot. That's...
Right.
The setback, the line would be reduced from 5 feet to 4.5 feet.
Yes, sir.
Not inches.
Right, right.
Can we just make it to the existing footprint that's there now?
No, you gotta, you gotta give them a number, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, like, if they don't change it to the footprint, I mean, it's already founded.
It's already built.
It's framed, so I mean, like...
We actually re-shot it.
You can wait this call.
Yeah.
The motion is to, the setback would be reduced from 5 feet to 4 feet, 4.5 feet as the footprint of the structure is now. Karen, you got that? And that is, that's your motion.
And Jeff, second?
Beth, second. We need discussion.
No further discussion.
I think there's a hardship that's established with the, just a simple mistake. I think they operated in good faith. I think it will be in good neighborhood cohesion.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Fletcher?
No comments.
Jeff?
Due to the design of the house, I don't see an easy way to correct it by shaving the four inches off the side of the house, and I feel like it really is in everybody's best interest, including yours, for them to just go ahead and get it done.
Mr. Anderson?
No discussion.
Motion closed, discussion.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve, we start, Mr. Burgess?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
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 You received your variance. We appreciate you coming forward, making a lot of money in Walton County, back there with neighbors and I'll come back for two, ten years.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, snap.
This is the eleven fifteen minutes.
From way back. Didn't we, uh, didn't we just push everything off on that one?
Yeah, do we not have the, we're not, we don't have the, the minutes from the, we don't have the minutes from the Kaya appeal, so that would be at the next-
Motion to approve, the eleven fifteen twenty seventeen minutes. Somebody's second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
We got to, uh, to-
Meeting schedule.
Schedule.
Motion to, we need a motion to accept the schedule for, for the judgment, when it takes need of your help.
I would like to talk to everybody about maybe doing half of them here and half of them back up in, in the north end, like alternating, like January, February, doing, doing maybe fifty-fifty. Like we had our meeting up in the north end last time, it went really well. I don't like to drive. I think a lot of staff lives up north.
I think one of the issues though, Charlie, that we have is that facility isn't always as open as, I mean, this one got set up, but that one, did we set up on?
Yeah, and Mr. Fletcher, we actually have to, we have to have bailiffs when we use the courthouse and the county is required to reimburse those bailiffs for their time.
And I think also most of your applicants are usually, or have been, from down here, so they would have that drive.
We, while we had it, they were down here, we agreed.
Yeah, right.
Especially side, probably close to that. Have that up, the whole thing?
Yes.
I'm driving one way or the other, so.
Doesn't matter to you.
Right.
Well, the fact that we would have to pay for bail.
That, that would be our only concern about it, is reimbursing the bailiffs for their time and that expense.
Mr. Fletcher's comment with all of your, of all the people down here, so it's a good chance. Yes, and we live there.
Well, if y'all ever get the free pour set up, we could try to, free pour, it'd be in the middle.
Yeah.
I think it just got shot down.
I think it did, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to have a motion to approve the twenty eighteen calendar.
I wanted to point out that next November and December, I was expecting, I was expecting my base, so maybe you're going to be in the venue.
Okay, sure.
Oh, I'll, and we'll probably forget, but I'll remind, the, the third Mondays of the month, uh, actually might work. I do have a city, I represent the city of Mariester and they sometimes have meetings